Called meeting to order, please rise for a moment of silence, filed about the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Garzema, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Chairman Di Maria.
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht.
Here.
Mrs. Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. O'Hanlon.
Here.
Mrs. Seaver.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mrs. Morales.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. McGorick, are there additions or deletions?
Yes, we have two to the consent agenda, under Student Services, the student transfer request, and under Personnel, ratification of personnel.
Thank you. Superintendent's announcements or spotlights?
Yes, we do.
Ms. Radford?
Thank you, Dr. McGorick, thank you Chairman, and other members of the board, good evening to you, and good evening to everyone that's here tonight to share with us. I'm very honored to do some presentations under the spotlights tonight. I'm going to ask that you and Dr. McGorick would come join me down front. First, I'd like to ask Osborne High School student Ryan Palmachan to come forward as I share information about his outstanding accomplishment. I'd like him to be down front. Oh, there he is, okay. Okay, so Ryan was selected as a Tenor I for the Virginia Senior Honors Choir. The VMEA Honors Choir provides an opportunity for the top singers in the state to rehearse challenging music and work with a distinguished choral conductor at an advanced level. Only seniors are eligible to audition for this highly selective choir, as the top 20 to 25 of each voice part are selected to participate. Ryan will participate in the Honors Choir November 16 through the 18th in Hot Springs, Virginia, at the Homestead. We know that he will represent Osborne High School and Manassas City Public Schools well. His school choral director, Ms. Angela Easley, is also here, so I'm going to ask that she would join us up front, and let's congratulate Ryan on his accomplishment. Thank you. Yes, congratulations, Ryan, thank you. All right, our next presentation, the Osborne High School Screaming Eagles Marching Band has made great gains during their 2017 competition season. The Screaming Eagles Director, Andrew Wasson, is here tonight with several members of his student leadership team. I would like them to come forward as I share a little bit about their accomplishments. So you all come up front. We've got a lot of them here. Either way, it's fine. All right, as they come, from the Battle of the Blue Ridge in Winchester, to the Hanover Hawks' Marching Invitational, to the VBODA marching assessment, the Screaming Eagles worked diligently to be the best they could be. In just two weeks between their first two competitions, the band's scores improved drastically. Their music score jumped 10.5 points, their visual score jumped 16.5 points, their general effect score jumped 18.7 points, and their percussion score jumped 18 points, their total average jumped 14.1 points. Most importantly, the band earned a rating of excellent at the Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association Marching Assessment this past weekend in Ashburn, and we congratulate this marching band on all their many accomplishments this year, a lot in a short amount of time. Congratulations to you. I know, just kind of come in a little bit more, yeah. He's good. Want to see Mr. Wasson back there too. Yeah, y'all got it. Yeah, say him a little bit, Mr. Wasson. There you go, okay. Everybody look this way. One, two, three. Let's do one more. Okay, that's a good one. Now it's you. They said they're happy. All right, and one, two, three. All right, again, one, two, three. All right, good job, everybody, thank you. You can take your seats, yeah. Outstanding students. Our final recognition for tonight is about the Virginia Historical Society's 2017 Brenton S. Housie Teaching Excellence Award. Each year, the Virginia Historical Society presents this award to a deserving history teacher in the Commonwealth. We are pleased to say that this year's winner is Jennifer Weiser, a 4th grade teacher at Weems Elementary School. So Jennifer, can you come forward? To be considered for this award, a teacher must demonstrate an understanding of history and enthusiasm for the subject, foster a spirit of inquiry, and the development of critical thinking skills among students, use innovative and creative teaching techniques and materials, promote the use of new and innovative teaching techniques by colleagues, provide leadership in the field of K-12 history education. Ms. Weiser has taught at Weems for three years. It is her passion for teaching Virginia Studies that resulted in her nomination for the award. Nominators describe her as a teacher who utilizes student and teacher collaboration on special projects, is always thinking of new and innovative ways to bring history alive for her students. We see that her principal, Mr. Dave Rupert, has joined her, and we appreciate his support. Congratulations to you, Ms. Weiser, thank you for all that you do to prepare our students for academic success. Thank you. In the state, congratulations, Ms. Weiser. That concludes our recognitions for tonight, thank you.
Committee reports. Mr. Williams, anything on academics?
Yes, the academic committee met yesterday, and we met with some representatives from Osborne High School, some of whom are here in the audience, to discuss two new courses that will be suggested for addition to the catalog of next year, and the board will talk about that during the next work session, which is November 2nd, I believe, and then at a meeting later on this year.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Albrecht, anything on educational support?
No report, sir.
Ms. Kiefer, anything on policy?
No report, sir.
Mr. Albrecht, finance?
No report.
Ms. Seaver, personnel?
No report.
We are rolling now. Board member comments. Mr. Anderson, we're going to start with you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Right now, we're very busy at the Writing Center, getting ready for next week, where we have events such as Similes for Skittles on Monday, Memoirs for Muffins on Tuesday, and also, next week in Osborne High, we have the Haunted Halls, which began Thursday at 7:00 PM. Recently, I found out that I was a recipient for the CAFTA Scholarship, which is great. So that means that I get to go to the CAFTA Conference for free, and that will be December the 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Free is always good. Ms. Seaver, words are going to come right on up the line if you're ready.
Sure.
I didn't mean to throw you a curve there.
No, that's fine. Thanks to the students and the teachers that were honored here tonight, congratulations. Our next time to hear our awesome band is this Friday at the football game, it's the last time they'll perform their show versus Colgan, 7:00 PM, this game start. Last week, I was able to attend the Special Olympics event that was hosted by Manassas Park High School, and it was great to see our students participating and cheering for each other. It was a beautiful day in many ways. Sunday, I attended the dedication of the new historical marker in the city for Jane Sarepta Dean, also known as Jenny Dean, and it's located on the Wellington side of the Jenny Dean Memorial Site, right out in front of our school. So check that out if you get a chance. Ethan mentioned that we have, excuse me, Mr. Anderson mentioned, that we have Haunted Halls at Osborne coming up on Thursday, and also Jenny Dean's having their boo bash Thursday evenings, beginning at 6:00 PM. Both of these events are family-friendly, and they charge a nominal fee. There is an early release on Thursday, and no school for students on Friday, but don't worry if you see some kids around town, they might be putting up these posters. We've got Robin Hood coming to Osborne High School, November 16th, 17th, and 18th, so put that on your calendars, be sure to come out and support our Fine Arts at Osborne. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you. I'll be brief tonight. I want to echo something Ms. Seaver said, I heard a lot of great reviews about the Special Olympics event that happened last week, not only from our students going and participating, but also from support they got at the high school. So thank you to all those here and who are not here, who supported them, because that support is invaluable and measurable, and you don't know how much you could put into a child's life by doing something as simple as cheering for them, so thank you for all of you who did that. A lot of folks were really touched by that. I also, on a personal note, have a good friend who ran in a Marine Corps marathon, and I found out yesterday that one of our staff members did as well and completed it, so I want to call out Dr. Sandersburg, persevering and pushing through, great job, and we're proud of you, and you should bring your mail to the board so we could like see it, you know, we can show it off. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, bring it with you, I'll take credit for it. Mr. O'Hanlon?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Most of what I was going to say has already been said, but I did want to talk, well, first of all, congratulations to all those honored tonight who are gone, but congratulations, you'll be home watching and on TV, I'm sure. I did want, was able to get over to the high school when the kids were getting ready to go to the Special Olympics, and I wanted to thank everybody at the high school for the great job you did with that. It was a spectacular send-off for our athletes. The band played, and the students lined the bus loop to cheer on their classmates. And also, thank you to Baldwin, staff and students, who completely lined Eagle Way as the buses were pulling out there. So it was, it was a great day, so, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Williams?
Again, I would like to congratulate all the students and the teacher for winning the Historic Society Award, that's just amazing. To make history exciting for those who perhaps don't have so much passion in it is definitely a talent. I'd also like to say, Saturday night, I attended the first annual 10K raffle that the Osborne High School alumni and Osborne Park High School alumni put on, and it was, the support was amazing, how many people were in attendance on the very first, first go at that. So that was a lot of fun, met a lot of people, saw a lot of neighbors. Also, I just want to remind all the children, Halloween is next week, so safety first. Make sure the kids are with adults, make sure they're dressed with a flashlight, or those light things that go around their wrist or their necks, because it's just dark, and drivers can't see you, just because you see them doesn't mean they can see you, so I want everybody just be extra cautious Halloween night, and that's all I've got tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Kiefer?
Thank you. I too wanted to congratulate everybody honored tonight. I'm a huge supporter of Fine Arts and the music, so I, with that, I'm going to plug tomorrow night, Osborne High School Orchestra, 7 o'clock concert, so we're very excited about that. Also, Dr. McGorick has done something in, for a few years now, called State of the Schools, where she invites the community leaders to join her for breakfast, so she can give an update on the state of our schools and the importance of the great partnerships we have here in the city, that just sort of help propel our kids into an even bigger realm of things through opportunities that our community partners provide. So that's coming up, November 2nd, from 8 to 10, at the Candy Factory, so looking forward to that. I also wanted to acknowledge that last week was National School Bus Safety Week. So, you know, as you know, this board has made it pretty clear that the safety, in addition to obviously the education of our children, is among the most important things to us. We've made sure that all of our school buses have stop-arm cameras, Mr. Hawkins regularly gives us updates on the citations, so that we can figure out better ways to educate our public about keeping our kids safe. But I have to say that every day, our children wake up and go to their buses, the first person they see, who's going to get them to and from school, the person with the smile that welcomes them onto our bus, are the, are the bus drivers and the attendants. So I really wanted to just take time, I think it's sometimes you kind of take for granted bus drivers and the attendants and the people who really have just taken on the commitment to, you know, make sure our kids are safe every day, so I just wanted to shout out to all of those who do that hard work. It's an easy, it's not an easy job, it's not a job that I think I could do very well on many realm, many different ways, I just couldn't do it as well as they do. So I just wanted to take a moment and let them know, you don't go unnoticed, and it's just an important, important job here in the district, so, thank you.
Well said, ma'am, thank you. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks to all my colleagues, I think you successfully checked off almost everything on my list. Congratulations to our students, our staff member, and again, it highlights what I talked about last time, which is the great things that are happening here in the city. The one unique item I do want to talk about is, if your mailbox isn't full, if you haven't gotten a lot of robo calls, if you haven't been watching television, then you probably don't know there's an election on November 7th, but hopefully, everybody does. If you can't vote, vote early. It's our constitutional right, people die and have laid their lives on to give us that right, exercise your right to vote. I don't care how you vote, go vote.
Thank you, sir, you're right. My list has also been checked off, but I'm going to reiterate what Ms. Williams said about our Osborne alumni raffle that we, reverse raffle that we had on Saturday night. We had 300 tickets to sell, and we did our very best to sell them all, and we did. So we don't have our numbers back in quite yet, but we raised somewhere between $11,000 and $12,000, which will all go to scholarships next year. So it was a great event, we had city council people there, we had school board members there, we had the mayor there, we had state delegates there, and beside them, another, you know, 290 people bought tickets. And I'd just like to thank everybody and realize that it did sell out, and we're going to do it again next year, and it will sell out, and it's a really good time, the emcee is a really good-looking guy, and it, yeah, him?
She said good-looking.
Yeah. And it's, it's a great event, and it does a lot of good for our kids, so. And now, on our board member comments, I'm going to have superintendent's comment time. Dr. McGorick?
Thank you. Tonight, I have something that I want to share with, I've talked with our board members, and I want to share with the public. Dear board members of, dear members of the school board of the City of Manassas and employees, it's truly with mixed emotion that I write this letter to inform you of my intent to retire, effective June 30th, 2018, and to thank the board, the school board of the City of Manassas, for its willingness to offer me a contract, but at this time, I can't move forward with that. I'm optimistic about my retirement, because at this time, my mother is very ill with Alzheimer's, and I need to support my father's taking care of her. I'm very sorry. This decision is very bittersweet, in that I'm saddened about the departure from this phenomenal school division, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart, and it's equable, equally remarkable employees and students that I've worked with so closely, and at the same time, I know that I'll cherish the time I get to spend with my parents in this important time in their lives. This is my sixth year with Manassas City Public Schools, and my 38th year in education, and I have enjoyed and cherished every minute of my work and the relationships I've experienced with our incredible students, teachers, staff, administrators, and school board. I also have never worked in a community where there's so much support for the schools from families, families, business leaders, and the school board. Finishing one's career in a school division like MCPS is not an experience that all superintendents can claim. Manassas City Public Schools looks different today than it did in 2012, and it's because of the work of dedicated, passionate, and creative teachers, staff, and students. However, the work that has been accomplished could not have happened without the support of a passionate and dedicated school board. Manassas City Public Schools will always have a place in my heart. I said I would do better than this, and I know that the next superintendent will feel the same joy in working with such a wonderful group of people, who care deeply about students and the people they work with. With eight months of school, of the school year remaining, I look forward to completing many projects that are in progress, and I will continue to push for improved student achievement, which has been a major emphasis during my tenure as superintendent. Thank you for allowing me to serve you now and during the remaining months of my contract.
Thank you, Dr. McGorick. I don't think anybody's real thrilled about that, but we understand that you have to have priorities. I was going to make fun of you before this, but I figured I'd wait till now. At the Alumni Association Raffle on Saturday night, the first number wins $100, and the 20th one, number, wins $100. She won both of them.
But not the big one.
No, she didn't win the big one, but she did win those monies back, so it's with heavy heart, with what you're saying tonight, but at least, you know, you won a couple hundred bucks. So that, hopefully that helps, and you're right, you're under contract for another eight and a half months, and we expect the same level of input we got for the first six years for the next eight and a half months.
Yes, sir.
Citizens' comments. Anybody want to follow that? Not tonight, Rodney?
No.
Okay. Yeah, okay, thank you very much. All right, everybody okay? All right, we're going to go on to the consent agenda, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, the school board agenda, adopt the consent agenda as modified.
School board, okay, of Manassas? Okay, everybody knows what it meant there? That the City of Manassas School Board is, accept the consent agenda?
As modified.
As modified, you messed up the first words. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Education Foundation Annual Report.
That's not fair.
Yeah, I know, maybe Rodney should have come up here first.
Did my best to mess up your latest.
Hey, well, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. McGorick, other members of the board, thank you for having us here tonight to give you an update on our past year with the Education Foundation. Oh, you said go down, okay.
Um, I'm going to interrupt you.
Yes.
We're kind of screwed up here tonight, so, Ms. Katie Keegan.
Oh.
I didn't introduce you.
Katie Keegan.
I was supposed to do that.
Sorry, okay, Katie Keegan, Executive Director of the Education Foundation, and we have had the honor of having Susanna Steen with Micron as our president for the past several years, and we're very grateful that she remains as an active member of our board, but I'm excited to introduce our new president of the Education Foundation, Liz Via Gosman, with the City of Manassas.
Okay. Okay, everything I was going to say just sort of flew out the window. Thank you, Chairman Di Maria, and members of the school board, and Dr. McGorick. Dr. McGorick is one of the reasons that I'm standing here before you. She knows my passion for schools and for schools and the connection with community development. Before getting on the board, I had several conversations with Dr. McGorick about the city staff getting more involved, more involved in, in schools, and how could I be more involved other than my duties as Community Development Director, I'm sorry, Liz Via Gosman, Director of Community Development. And so she's one of the reasons I'm standing up here, and so I'm going to look forward to the next several months as I do my one-year term, and then we'll see about another term, since Dr. McGorick might be taking off on us here. Okay, back to the screen. Thank you. No?
I don't know.
Which one, Alba?
I'm going to take it.
Thanks. Are you going to do it? Okay, sorry, not used to that. So, tonight, this is an important year, and I'm really, again, proud to be the president in this year. We're celebrating 25 years, and just like the history of the Alumni Association, the Education Foundation is proud of all the things that we have done over, over the last 25 years, supporting teachers and the students of Manassas City Schools, and it's really all about the teachers and the students. And one of the things that we're doing this year is really taking the focus off of the Education Foundation and back to the teachers, the students, the grants, the scholarships, the things that we do. And I think most of you have seen the video we're going to show tonight, but we'll show it again tonight for, for the public, which I think showcases that. To celebrate our 25th anniversary, we are, have set a fundraising goal of $25,000 in personal donations this year, putting that out there, and we'll have to say that the mayor has already kicked us off with a donation after convocation, he was so moved by the video that you're going to see, he wrote me a check the very next day. So I'm looking forward to continuing, working with, with the community as we celebrate 25 years, and now we'll show our video. The mission of the Education Foundation is to rally the community for our public schools, to help the community understand that our schools and the academic success of our students is what makes this community such a great community, and that takes all of our businesses, all of our parents, all of our residents, as one community for our city schools.
Education Foundations exist around the United States to serve as fiscal agents for the different educational institutions and public school districts that they represent, but I also feel it is more enhanced, because we serve not only as the fiscal agent for Manassas City Public Schools, but also as a connector within the community.
A lot of the teacher grants that we funded this year focused on integrating technology, so by providing elementary-level students with access to robotics and coding skills, but then also, we funded a 3D design scanner and printer at Dean Elementary. We fund the robotics programs at all levels in Manassas City Public Schools. Another area that we really explored this year was to encourage movement through learning, and we did that through the Biology for Fitness Program at Metz this year. We also really encourage the growth and development of literacy in all of our schools, and that's highlighted in a very successful program at Osborne High School called the Eagle Writing Center. All of these funds are made possible due to our partnerships with businesses and community members, and we really would not be able to fund as many of these programs if it weren't for them.
Our Programs Committee awards scholarships and teachers' grants every year. With the teachers' grants, teachers come to us with ideas for innovative programs, and then we evaluate them, then disperse the funds, and I continue to be humbled to see the applicants that apply for our scholarships, and so I'm not worried about our future generation at all.
When we can allocate funds and resources to the teachers, can you imagine the amount of students that now have impacted, can now increase their awareness or their connection to robotics, or STEM, or any other activities, that they may not have had that opportunity to now be impacted by? They can do it in their classrooms.
We are able to do a lot more for the schools when we partner, because we are part of the Manassas City Public Schools. We are one, and we exist as a foundation to be a fiscal agent and to be cheerleaders for the schools, and that has been very rewarding.
You cannot have a great city if you don't have great schools. You cannot have a great city if you don't have great schools. And you can't have a foundation without funding partners. And so our funding partners are very well-known, and as I believe one of the board members mentioned, we'll be doing our State of the Schools with Dr. McGorick and the school system, and we'll be actually recognizing our champions. There's five, six businesses that have given considerable amount of money, Micron, Apple Swift, others that you see on the screen, and we will be recognizing them that evening. Just real quick, the nitty-gritty of the report tonight, Mr. Chairman, and then we'll wrap up very quickly. But these are our funding levels that you can see before you. We had a little bit of a dip last year and a little bit of a transitional year. We brought those numbers back up this year, particularly with the grant for cybersecurity that Katie's going to talk about in just a moment. And as you can see, we really want that gold bar and that blue bar to be even, because the money comes in and the money goes right back out. And that's what we like to see every year, is evenness in those bars. And I'll ask Katie now to tell you about our programs.
So to quickly highlight a few of our focus areas that were really targeted in the video as well, but because of those funding partners, we're able to really focus on scholarships for students at Osborne and our teacher grants. So last year, we awarded 10 scholarships to Osborne students for a total of $20,000 in the areas of CTE, STEM, Fine Arts, Pathway to Baccalaureate, Community Service, and then the Superintendent's Scholarship, which goes to a student who is going to pursue teaching as their career. Last year, we funded 10 programs with a total a little over $62,000, and we highlighted several of those in our video. But you can see that two of the programs that we funded last year integrated learning through movement and promoted physical wellness. We funded all the robotics programs at all levels, as well as summer camp opportunities and the Eagle Writing Center, which Mr. Anderson was sharing about. And we're really excited because applications for this year's teacher grant requests are due November 17th, and so we're excited to see who will be our innovative educators this year. In addition to the scholarships and the teacher grants, we are honored to be able to provide our award-winning teachers with monetary prizes through the support of Micron, Apple Federal Credit Union, and Mini Land. The Education Foundation received a $25,000 grant last year from the Community Foundation from Northern Virginia, and we fundraised for the additional $25,000 match. And this $50,000 for Osborne High School has helped them to develop a cybersecurity program, which will provide students with the skills necessary to enter a high-scale, high-wage workforce that is very much in high demand in this area. And as you can see, some of the businesses that partnered with us to help us, businesses and groups that helped us to reach our match. As was already mentioned, we do have the State of the Schools on November 2nd, which we are partnering with the Manassas City Public Schools and Dr. McGorick to showcase some of these programs that you've seen in our videos and you've heard us talk about. We're going to be showcasing some of those programs at the event, as well as recognizing some of our business partners. We did move Stand Strong for Education to March with a snow date of March 12th taking place at Metz Middle School. And as always, this is an exciting event that really brings together schools, businesses, community members, and various organizations within the Manassas area. And then on May 24th will be our annual event of the Night of Excellence, which is our opportunity to celebrate our award-winning teachers, our innovative educators, and our scholarship recipients. All of these events provide us with an opportunity to raise awareness about our mission of our foundation, so we invite all to attend. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share a little bit about our year with you and for your continued support of the Education Foundation, and we are looking forward to a successful 25th year.
Thank you very much. Board members, do we have any comments? The founding member of the Education Foundation, sir?
I don't think I'm technically a founding member, but...
It was close enough.
But 25 years, and it's come a long way from what Mike Vanderpool, Dr. Gillum, Joe Johnson, Hunter Bell thought of, and it's spectacular. Thank you, ladies. Thank you to the whole, the foundation, the current directors, our corporate partners, because it truly embodies what it was meant to be. You know, early on, we saw ourselves as the venture capital of the schools. Our first project was called Surf's Up, and it was putting a 9.6 line and a PC in a classroom connected to this new thing called the Internet. Now we're talking 3D printers and robotics and motion and learning, and wow, we've gone a long way. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add one thing for the thousands of people watching us on TV. The foundation does love partners, meaning any citizens can donate even $25, $50. So it's not just big businesses that can partner with the foundation, so I wanted to point that out as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. We really appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Student Achievement, Metz Middle School. Ms. Buckhite.
I think I'll drive by myself out, though. I'll let you know if I need help, though. So, good evening, Chairman Di Maria, members of the board. I have the pleasure of reviewing with you the 2017, 2018 Metz Middle School data from last year. So this is my third year as principal at Metz Middle School. Many changes occurred last year at Metz that led to immediate improvements in school climate. These changes set the stage for imminent academic growth and a continued positive atmosphere for teaching and learning this year. Academy structure enters year two. Our new schedule allows more students to be having their classes within their team, furthering enriching the relationships between students, staff, and parents. It also creates a sense of belonging for students and parents. Students definitely identify as a Metz Middle School student, but also within their academy. If you meet a student and you ask them what academy they're on, they'll be able to share with pride where they are a member. I want to recognize the value tonight also of early recruitment and acknowledge really some excellent new teachers that we were able to gather through some of those April adventures out to the universities. You'll notice in our upcoming data slides, growth in our English language learners. The work done by our Social Studies, Science, English, and Math Departments and ESAL teachers last year is really to be commended. Those students made significant growth, and that is an area to celebrate. The Integrated Humanities Program is in its second year of implementation. Staff work daily to provide challenging academic opportunities that will prepare these students for advanced placement classes at the high school level. The Integrated Math Science Program is in its eighth year of implementation and continues to experience high interest from both students and parents. Our Fine Arts Program is strong, with increased enrollments in both band, chorus, orchestra, and de jour art. Hundred percent of our students are engaged in an art activity every day. We received word yesterday that we will continue to be recognized as a common sense media exemplar for our digital citizenship program. As we examine the next four achievement data slides that Metz staff, I need to make it clear that all Metz staff acknowledges that while we have some areas of growth, our overall achievement declined, raising concerns amongst all constituents. Teachers began collaborating this summer and have continued daily to collaborate to identify potential causes for the decline and plan for strong gains this year. Writing increases are attributed to that targeted grammar instruction that was embedded into our grade seven and eight classrooms last year, and English teachers are continuing that practice this year. Grade eight science assessment contains items related to content students learn in grade six Earth Science, grade seven Life Science, grade eight Physical Science. A review of the science student by question data really raised the critical need to increase teacher collaboration six through eight. So really reaching down and working with the sixth-grade science teachers is critical. It also made it, so one of the strategies that our science department is using this year is rather than waiting to really review the sixth-grade standards, seventh-grade standards, that month before testing, there will be weekly review of standards going back to really grade six starting now. So students will be using their advisory time to do some of that review for really preparing and reviewing all year. Metz staff recognize the growth within our English learner subgroup and are continuing to extend those best practices of the use of visual techniques to accelerate this trend. We, at the same time, recognize that all other reporting groups remain the same or declined. Teachers collaborate for a minimum of two hours a week. During this time, they review to what degree students are demonstrating mastery on each of the standards of learning and share strategies that can be used in the classroom to increase When we look at our math data by subgroup, we again see a very similar data profile for the area of math. Reporting groups really declined across the board, with the exception of our English learners. Math personnel spent countless hours this summer analyzing student performance data. The Mayfield and Metz math coaches worked together to prepare for the assessment of new math standards beginning in 2018. This year, instructionally in math, it's considered a crossover year by the state, requiring staff to be teaching both old standards that will be tested this spring, as well as those new standards that will be tested the following year. The Metz math teachers worked together this summer and continue to work daily to implement, to interpret the information and develop curriculum and assessment that were more closely aligned with the end-of-year SOL. One level of concern that was identified when they did some of this interpretation was that the current SOL relies heavily upon students solving multi-step math problems rather than a single-step algorithm. And that really was something that was a noticeable change for them. So part of the real change within classrooms every day now, as well as testing quizzes, that students are experiencing that multi-step problem-solving method that needs to happen to allow them to perform more successfully in the spring. This slide reflects the five-year trend for each subject area. Again, I and all Metz staff acknowledge the significant decline across all areas tested last year. Actions currently underway to ensure gains, in addition to those that I've already spoken to, include really the strategic use of advisory by teachers. Staff have been working together to develop methods to ensure that this advisory period is used as a time to increase academic success. Members of the leadership team have developed and will begin implementing within the next week, a weekly advisory planning sheet to be completed by each student on Monday. This activity models the one used by Avid students and will be implemented building-wide for all. I commend staff for their work to make advisory a part of the school day, as well as to find methods to ensure that it's used in a purposeful manner. There are areas to celebrate and areas in which to grow. As with the improvement of any organization, the trick is to maintain what works while at the same time focusing energy on improving areas of concern. When the organization functions smoothly, the areas of strength fuel the improvement efforts. I know that the ability for our teachers and students to collaborate within the academy structure will drive student achievement forward. The action steps within our reconstitution agreement include a focus upon teacher lesson planning, as it aligns to each standard of learning. We have created procedures that rely heavily upon teachers providing feedback to each other on the lesson design and the delivery to students. Administrators have daily access to these lesson plans and provide feedback regarding alignment and delivery, instructional delivery to students through frequent walkthroughs. It is our goal to achieve 75% or better on each of the subject areas this spring. We continue this year to experience an improved school climate and have extended our efforts to include the use of restorative justice practices on each academy. Staff within the academy host a restorative justice circle for students who are experiencing difficulties conforming to rules or completing academic requirements. This effort is reflected in both the Student Services Goal and the Communication Goal. We should see a reduction in the number of students experiencing repetitive problems, thus the 30% reduction rate of recidivism. Each restorative circle involves a direct follow-up meeting with a parent. This often occurs immediately after the circle, which is reflected in our Communication Goal. An improved school climate and reduced student discipline will have a direct impact upon our human resource goal, maintaining 90% or better retention rate and increasing our teacher engagement rate. RTI at Metz occurs within the school day as an additional class for Tier Three students. Tier Two students receive intervention through a variety of methods, as indicated on the slide. And the RTI committee meets monthly to monitor student progress, in all honesty, probably daily. Miss Speaks and Miss Stuckey are every day, looking at student performance and making recommendations and accommodations as need be to help every child succeed. So I want to thank you for your time and the ongoing commitment that each of you make to really make Metz Middle School a place where we can be proud of the strength and excellence that thrives there. I also want to kind of then go off script a little bit and thank Dr. McGorick for the opportunity to join this fine institution and really congratulate her on a wonderful career, and am envious of the opportunity she's going to have to spend with her family. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions or comments?
Ms. Buck, I heard it in your voice, and I know that you and the staff are stressed, and middle school students are tough. And I think everyone in the diet has empathizes with you, and I think collectively, we also all understand, recognize, and support we must do better. So we need to work together to make that happen.
Thank you. Agreed. Yeah.
He's absolutely right. The scores need to come up, and if there's, we do have faith in you and our staff. If there's anything that the board can do besides tutor them, because I don't know that I want any of these people tutoring people, but as a community, we need to put all of our efforts toward helping you and helping our children increase these scores. They need to come up, and you've got our support, and we just need to keep working to bring them up. And if there's anything, let us know.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Williams?
Well, first I want to let you know I am a good tutor.
Yeah, you could tutor. That's not funny.
Yeah. I just wanted to add that you have our support. I know this is not an easy presentation, but know that we're behind you, and the thing we can do is to help. You know, we're here.
And it'll be better next year. It will be.
It will be. Thank you, and thank you all for the support, the continued support. It does mean a lot, because as you know, you know many, many staff at Metz, and they cherish the opportunity they have to talk to you and to get those positive comments. So thank you for that, and continue those, please, for them.
Ms. May, thank you. Osborne High School. Mr. Gomoski.
Chairman Di Maria, members of the school board, and Dr. McGorick, glad to be here tonight to talk about some exciting things and also some tough things that we're working through at Osborne. But I have a tendency to talk a long time, so I've got my timer set, and I'll try to keep it brief. But I have a lot to say, so hopefully I can get through it all. The first thing I'd like to talk about are some good things that are going on at the high school. We've already heard some things this evening, but these are things that in my short time that I've been there, I've had some opportunities to work with staff on, and I'm proud of these things. The first is the one-to-one device initiative that is now a permanent part of the high school setting. This year, admittedly, we had a little bit of a hiccup when we started the year because we were trying to push out our tablets in a new way. But what I have to say is, we made it a priority, and I think when you make things a priority and you run into some of the staff who, people come together... and you run into some of the staff who, people come together and they get things done, and that's exactly what happened. When I was approached by a staff member saying that we probably weren't going to be able to get these tablets to the kids, this was on a Wednesday, we weren't going to get them to them until Monday of the following week, I just said, "We can't do that. We have to get them to them by that Thursday." And the entire administrative staff pulled together, and we were all pulling tablets and distributing to them to send that message to our staff that we were taking this initiative seriously. And I can report to you, by Friday morning, every student that wanted a tablet had one, and then we were in the process of actually exchanging tablets that weren't working for ones that were. And by the close of day on that Friday, our high school was truly one-to-one. The second thing that I'm very proud of is the Governor's STEM Academy. We keep hearing different accolades about this, but one accolade that I'm particularly touched by are the phone calls that are starting from parents that are quizzing us about what is going on at Osborne. And the nice thing about it is, these are not parents that are currently living in the city. They are people that are considering moving here, and they have heard the news, they know what we are doing, and they know that Osborne is moving forward. And admittedly, I'm coming in sort of the easy end because a lot of the hard work has been done, so we're reaping the benefits of that. The third thing is, I have to give it up to two of our assistant principals, Ryan Gaston and Andrew Wilson, who are really pushing us at Osborne to be a school that truly is PBIS. So this initiative, I'm talking about it, I've done some of the work, but admittedly, these two assistant principals have really made this initial step into PBIS happen. And if you've been in our office, you've heard some of the cheering that goes on. We have a little cheerleading section now where students get what we call a SOAR card. And what that is, is it's a small card that they get, and when either another, a teacher or an administrator identifies them as exemplifying something that's either safe, optimistic, accountable, or respectful, they get a SOAR card, and they bring it into the main office, and they put it in their box, and that's when the cheering happens. But the real cheering happens then at the end of the month, when, one, we pick out five different winners, and they get to have lunch in the cafeteria with their friends that we provide for them. But I never would have imagined that something as simple as a teacher recognizing a student for something positive that they're doing in the building could have such a profound effect, and it has. And we now have students finding ways to stuff the box with SOAR cards because they're all trying to get them. So there are days when it's difficult to find a SOAR card because they've all been given out. So Mr. Wilson's been keeping up with it, though. And I'm very, I'm optimistic that shortly, I think, we already are a PBIS school, but I'm optimistic that we're going to go from good to great with that initiative. And even this morning, and this is a little bit off the cuff, but they were talking about some other initiatives to take the next step in the PBIS, and we are studying that presently. So all of that leads to supporting opportunities for our students. So those are some of the positive things that I've seen and make me want to go to work tomorrow morning. Now, I would like to just, I'm going to cover through some numbers, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on them because I want to get to what we're going to be doing about these numbers. So I'll try to go through this briefly. The first are our pass rates by subject, and admittedly, we've had some declines, but we've also had a little bit of an uptick in our science department, which is a little bit of a trend. So as you can see, I'm not going to read these to you, but our science department went up by one, but the other departments saw some declines. Our reading pass rates by reporting groups, our English learners scored some gains, as did our white students, but across, essentially across the board, we saw declines, especially with some of our minority populations. And I'll talk more at length later on when we're talking about our interventions that we're going to be putting into place. But I do want to say, I was grateful to hear the comments tonight about the Special Olympics send-off that we had, and I do want to say that Osborne is going to be a place where students with disabilities are treated exactly the same, if not better, than the students who do not have disabilities. I want our school to be an inclusive place, and in fact, I want our school to be a place where parents who have students with disabilities seek out Osborne as a place to come. So I'm worried about our numbers from 64 to 47, and that is something I'll talk about in a minute. That's going to be a priority for us. Our math rates, they've declined, and I will talk a little bit more about that in just a few minutes. We have had some gains in our SOLs. I talked briefly before about some gains in our science department. Particularly of note is our rise in the chemistry scores, which puts us above the state rate. Chemistry is a difficult class, not only to take, but it's a difficult class to teach. So I'm encouraged by those numbers, and I'm also, I'm encouraged by our geography numbers. You can't score higher than 100. So our teachers, I'm proud of them for what they've done in those areas. And then you can see in earth science and biology, we saw some gains as well. In the others, we saw some declines, but when I get to the intervention piece of this presentation, I'll talk about what we're going to be hopefully doing about that as a staff. Our college and career data, I'm not going to hide from this one. We have a concern, and that is our dropout rate. The dropout rate over a four-year period has gone from 4.6% to 12.5%, and that is, that is a concern. And there's, I just don't know how else to say it, but it is something that, as I get into the interventions, you'll hear more about some proactive things that we're going to be doing to respond to this. We have seen some gains in the SAT scores. If you take a look at our numbers as compared to the national average, we've exceeded the national scores. We are still lagging behind the state of Virginia, though, in those numbers. And when it comes to ACT scores, as you compare the numbers there statewide, we're lagging behind. We're close to the national average, but we've got some room to gain in the state scores. The other piece is our on-time graduation rate, which right now is sitting at 78.4%, which is another concern, but we will, I'll be talking about that in a minute, some things that we've got to address that. So those are just some numbers I wanted to highlight for you. Our findings, our areas of strength, student performance in geography and chemistry, I'll perform the state averages. As I said before, our SAT scores in comparison to the national average are higher, and our students across the board, both in science and some strong performance in U.S. history and world history, are things that I think we need to consider as areas of strength. And also, obviously, with our CTE program, the continued growth of local business participation with our high school. Some areas for improvement, student performance in both math and reading, our student performance in the advanced placement courses, and as I said previously, our on-time graduation rate and our dropout rate. So here's where I really want to dig in a little bit with some things that we are doing, and that is our improvement goals. First of all, we've met with our staff and worked through and had some challenging conversations, but we've come to set some pretty lofty goals, I think. 50% of our students identified as tier-three and two students in both math and English will achieve a passing SOL score. Our on-time graduation will rise to 80%, and the dropout rate will be reduced to 10% in our math SOL scores will increase to 78%. And we're looking for a 3% rise across the board, both in reading and writing. In human resources, we are working diligently at improving staff morale, and we are, we've made a firm commitment to retain staff, and that is to have a rate of 90% or better. That just factors in, people do retire, people move, but if they're in Northern Virginia and they're working for us, we want them to stay at Osborne. Once surveyed, 95% of our staff will respond that they are valued in the decision-making process for the school. And one of the things we've done to immediately address that is, we have department supervisors, department chairs. We meet once per week now, and they are actually helping drive a lot of the decisions that are being made at the high school level. In student services, student services is an area where I think we need to aim for 100%. And I know these numbers are lofty, but I want students to know that they're valued, and we care about them, and we want them in our school. So when surveyed, 100% of the students will state that they have met with their counselor to review their course schedule, confirm its accuracy. Those students that are demonstrating or are being identified as in danger of dropping out will have met with their counselor and developed a plan for successfully completing the requirements for graduation. And finally, when we do have students who are either out of the building for illness or they're out due to suspension, when they do return, they will have met with their counselor to develop a plan for successful reentry into the school setting. I think this is key to getting at part of the dropout dilemma. Students will get themselves behind, and once they're behind, they start losing hope. And once they lose hope, they stop coming to school. And I think if we can get at that through well-crafted plans to address those issues as they come back into school, hopefully, we can start chipping away at that dropout rate. Communication, 90% of the students, or parents, I'm sorry, will report that they were well-informed about school events. We've initiated one thing that, at least right now, is going pretty well. We have weekly robocalls that go out on Sunday evening to all the parents at the high school, and it's to announce what is going on in the school during the week, that week upcoming. The good thing about those calls I've found is, even if they, if parents don't listen to the message, because sometimes they do get tired of the guy who calls and makes those phone calls, the great thing is they send the email, and they have that email, and it's just one extra piece of driving home the message that we want them to be a part of the school. In addition to that, we continue to work at our website and to update it and have it more user-friendly so that people can find out information about the high school, and that piece is a work in progress. And the other piece of the communication is 100% of parents of students identified as tier-three will receive direct contact from teachers and counselors documented through logs. So really, for students who have Ds and Fs or are in danger of dropping out, our message to them is, "We're here to help. We're here to give them a plan towards success, and we want them to remain Osborne students." As I told the class this morning, the senior class, I want to make sure that everybody's in this room is walking across the stage in June. That's what our real priority is. So how are we going to do all this? It's a work in progress, but it's a piece that I think is up and running, and I'm proud of this. We have decided to, for our response to intervention, form what we call five subcommittees. We have one for math and English to address the math and English scores that you saw previously. We also have an RTI group that is meeting biweekly to address concerns within our ESOL population. We have an attendance RTI program, and that is one that I'm particularly proud of because we, this year, we have a full-time attendance officer on staff, and what we are doing is we are meeting every two weeks, and we are reviewing the attendance records of students. And what we're doing is coming out of those meetings with concrete plans to address their attendance issues. And we are starting to see some gradual improvement in the attendance of our students. The other piece is the freshman academy. And the freshman academy meets every two weeks, and what we do within there is, we have the two ninth-grade counselors, we have the ninth-grade assistant principal there, and I've made it a priority that I am there as well. And we're meeting biweekly, and we're talking about our at-risk students, students who would be categorized as tier-three, and we are working to craft plans for each one of those students as we leave those meetings as response, there are intervention plans that are put in place to address what the students need. And we're starting, we're in the beginning, so I don't have any real data to share with you to say that it's working, but I can tell you, I feel good walking out of those meetings, and I've been making it a priority, at least on my part, to be there as much as I can to be watching what we're doing and working with our staff to make sure that we're on track. Students who do not respond to the targeted interventions, in the end, will be referred to what we are in the process of constructing, and it's the dropout prevention committee, and that's the committee that I'm going to chair. So that, I think, I think it has to be with the principal in the end, that we make those students a priority and working with the staff, but that last gasp will be coming from me personally. So I just, I think it is just so important that students leave our school with an education and with that diploma, and I, that's where my priority is going to be this year. And that is our report for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Kiefer?
I always wait for these presentations to kind of be able to speak to everybody together. These are hard conversations. I know how hard it is for y'all to get up here and not be presenting exactly what you want to present, but I can say what everybody, I think, has said before me is, "We stand to support you. We are behind you, and everybody that's behind you, helping you to get our kids where they need to be." I think what we like and what's very refreshing, well, we hate having to look at just test scores, because when you look at everything else you talk about, you're looking at the holistic child, and that's the most important thing here. It's understanding where they're struggling, what they're dealing with, and you can just tell that the passion behind both of your voices tonight, you're bringing what your staff feels, and it stinks that, you know, we're sitting here just looking at these scores. But just to say that we appreciate all the efforts going on with guidance and all of the teachers and all the interventionists, I mean, to look at the child as a whole. So we want to thank you for that. We'll continue to support you. And just on a personal note, you know, you hear, "Middle school's the worst, middle school's the worst," and my freshman daughter's saying, "I miss Metz, too, and I love Osborne." So, you know, there's something to be said for what's going on here, and it's, nobody's making excuses, you've said it yourselves, nor are we, but let's just keep working and thank you for the work that you all do.
Williams? Thank you, Ms. Kiefer.
Thanks for the presentation. Numbers are an indicia of success, but they're not the only indicia. We have an impact on our children in many ways. Comforted and heartened by some of the things that you're undergoing and undertaking at Osborne, and as I said earlier, you also have our support. We thank you for what you're doing, and we know that it's going to make an impact on our children. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Robert?
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, can we start with, "Thank you for the Sunday calls. I love them." And thank you also for embracing the issues and not hiding from them. All too easy, it's real easy to confuse facts with more facts. And we've acknowledged what it is, and I absolutely agree with what Ms. Williams just said and what Mrs. Kiefer said, and that is, a child is more than a test score. But when we start talking about a dropout rate going from 4% to 12%, and that's the dropout rate, not to mention the on-time graduation rate, which then implies the four-to-five years and everything else, real quickly, we start looking like a couple of major college institutions, where you go to freshman orientation and look left and right, look right, one of you's not going to be here, and that's just wrong at the high school level. So I appreciate your taking that on. Just an interesting data point I had, as you looked at the ACT and the SAT scores, and you made a point, we're close to the national average, yet we lag Virginia. And that's one, a tribute to the quality of education and the Commonwealth. And it really gets to, what does adequate yearly progress mean? What is acceptable? Whereas a really good friend of mine said after we, in the same day, had been in Galax and Charlottesville, two different, two different high schools, "Free and appropriate doesn't mean the same." So we have a challenging population, but we've got great teachers and some great programs, and I'm confident collectively, the leadership of this school division, the teachers you have, we're going to start delivering those results and positively impacting those children's lives. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I'm really happy that you're heading the dropout situation. If our kids aren't there, they're not going to graduate. I mean, that 12% is right off the top, and I like the idea that you've got a goal to get it down each year, because I'm sure our goal for this year is going to be way higher than our goal for next year. than our goal for next year. Continue to lower that down. And I'm really happy that you're taking the initiative to head that committee, because I agree with you, I think that's the most important thing, because without the kids in the seats, they're not going to graduate, they're not going to live productive lives, most likely. I mean, some kids do, but it's very, very difficult to start an uphill battle when you're 16, 17-years-old. So I appreciate you doing that, and I'll just echo what everybody else said. Anyone else?
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Albrecht.
You're welcome. And if I could, before I leave, when I was in Loudoun, I had the privilege of working with a principal who, after almost 40 years, decided to retire. And I can tell you that the experience gained under him for seven years is something I carry with me every day. And what I learned is, in the four years that I've been separated from him professionally, you just really can't replace that experience. And though I've only been here a few months, my daughters have experienced this school since they've been starting as kindergarteners. And I'm just saying that it's, I didn't know what to say when I found out that Dr. McGork was retiring today. I just know that when I went home, I was sad by it, and I think we're losing not just 39 years of experience, but just a tremendous person. So, and my kids have benefited from it, so as a citizen, if I can say something, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Hawkins? Don't say anything about superintendent.
Good evening, Chairman Demaria, Superintendent McGork. Tonight, I'm here to present the revised FY18 Capital Improvement Plan and a five-year Capital Improvement Plan for FY19 through 2023. We believe that the contents of this plan will enhance instructional support, increase security, and provide for the long-term instructional needs of our students. On October 12th, the School Board held its first budget work session to discuss this plan. The contents of this plan are summarized as follows. Funding for the replacement of Dean Elementary with a 1,000-student, approximately 150,000-square-foot school, which includes design and demolition cost. Funding for design revisions and equipment purchases to create a division-wide pre-K program at Baldwin Elementary School. Funding for a permanent home for the central office totaling $6,192,000, which is a savings of $2.3 million over what we had in the original CIP. The reason for that is, is that we went back and took the industry standard for renovation cost as requested by Mr. Albrecht. And so we believe, we've had our experts, and we believe that we have an adequate, we have the correct amount in there now for funding for the central office, long-term future for the central office. The fourth component of our CIP is repurposing of $7,750,000 worth of funding that was originally designated for HVAC replacement at Osborne and Metz to other NEDA projects throughout the, through the use of an energy performance contract. That process is still ongoing, and we will be back in January with a formal presentation regarding that. Continued funding for roof at Mayfield Intermediate in 2020 totaling $2 million. Continued support to keep the breast fleet replacement cycle intact and provide for additional growth. Continued funding to support MCPS technology infrastructure, an amount of $1 million. And then, this plan, compared to what we had in the past, is an overall reduction of borrowing or issuing of bonds in the amount of $2.3 million. The new projects that we're funding in this plan would be SRO, School Resource Officer Vehicle Replacement, completing all the parking, the final portion of the parking lot replacement over at Osborne High School, gym locker replacement, both girls and boys at Osborne, Maker and Cosmetology, Makerspace and Cosmetology storefront renovations totaling $400,000 at Osborne, hallway flooring replacement totaling $1,624,000 for mainly at Osborne and Metz, I think it's only Osborne and Metz, creation of secured vestibules for all schools totaling approximately $1.3 million. On November 2nd, the School Board is scheduled to conduct another budget work session, where one of the agenda topics will be the Capital Improvement Plan. During the School Board's November 14th regularly scheduled meeting, public input will be received on the CIP, and on December 12th, the School Board is scheduled to vote on this plan. Are there any questions, concerns, comments at this time?
As Mr. Hawkins said, we were briefed on this already at our last budget session. So are there any other questions?
A couple of comments, sir.
Sir.
I want to acknowledge the November 14th meeting, I will already be at Williamsburg as part of my VSB agency, so I will be here for the public comment. Mr. Hawkins kind of made a comment, I want to make sure for the, who said, thousands of people watching? The central office number is not my number, I didn't pull the number out of a hat, rather, the last budget works, and I challenge staff to look at the methodology, and they have, they've gone back relative to the project on, they're taking over the public safety building, and what is an industry standard for that number of square feet to renovate it, and that's then what the basis of it is. The other kind of procedural process thing to put out there for the community is, as Mr. Hawkins just alluded to, we will take action on this at our December meeting. But this is predicated upon that energy service contract, of which the exact results we don't know, so likely in our budget process and in the final budget that we pass, there could be changes to the CIP, and that's just the kind of things that will have to happen. So it's not because we're in chaos and don't know what we're doing, we just acknowledge that we live in a state of flux.
We continue to meet weekly with our, for updates on the, with the energy performance contracting firm. We met today to talk about our measurement and verification standards. We're going to meet next week with our, I think, with technology staff. The week after that, on November 8th, we'll be meeting with them to talk about financing these projects and the legal ramifications that go along with it. And we will have the investment grade audit completed by November 30th, and we plan to present this to the finance committee probably during the first week of January and to the School Board at its first meeting in January. We're very excited about this program and this process, and we believe that Manassas City Public Schools will be the model that all Northern Virginia schools will come to when we get through with this project. To have all of our schools have LED lighting inside and out, to have all of our infrastructure be replaced and be up to date, all of our boilers and chillers, and to be the most efficient on the market today is an exciting, exciting concept for us. To have all of our heating and cooling systems to be able, to be controlled and monitored centrally, just vast improvements to our infrastructure, and we hope that we'll make substantial improvement to our learning environments for our students.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. The five-year forecast, sir? Is that what?
Well, the five-year forecast, I didn't have that pulled up. Can we pull that up, please? The last one at the bottom. So the five-year forecast hasn't changed significantly from when we met on October 12th, but, you know, the state revenue is being forecast at this time as a 2% annual increase. We're hopeful that this year, we will have a, with the new reforecasting in the biennium, that we hope that we will have more funding this year from the state, we're just not sure yet. All the federal and the other revenue have been, the federal revenue has been baselined and kept stagnant throughout, because we really don't know from one year to the next what that amount will be. City revenue is based off of the funding formula that we have established with the city, which it goes up, I think it's 2.625% annually each year. That funding agreement runs out in FY19, and I'm sure that we'll be talking with our partners with the city soon about extending or agreeing to a new funding formula throughout the foreseeable future for the next three years. But for this demonstration, right now, all of those, we've assumed that the funding formula will stay in effect as it is now through 2023. All of our operating expenditures are also being forecasted going up at a 2% annual rate. The grant funds and the food service fund have remained, are self-sufficient and are remaining stagnant in the forecast throughout. We go down, we look at the city profers. We have reduced this amount of money. When I first got here, this number was $800,000. You can see that in FY17, they actually collected almost $62,000. We have reduced that proffer revenue estimate down to $100,000 each year. See the proceeds from borrowing, and we see in FY20, in FY21, where we're issuing bonds, this is primarily for the, for building or replacement of Dean Elementary School and the central office complex. So as we go down, you will see that our debt service, well, in FY19 is, will be $7,489,000, and it will drop off significantly to 5.8 million for the next year. But when we start repaying back the bonds for Dean, replacement of Dean Elementary, you'll see that it goes up from 5.8 to, what, it's 6.9 million, and then the following year, it'll go up to 10 million. It'll stay at 10 million for the foreseeable future on this chart. How does this look at the bottom line? You can see that we are, we're doing pretty good. We will be in the black with our fund balance at 2.5% through 2020. We start getting, and adjustments will have to be made in the out years. I do caution you and the people watching this broadcast that it's not atypical for us to be in those out years, to be in the red like this, and it is state law that adjustments will be made. School divisions and school boards cannot spend money that they don't have, so we are required to have a balanced budget. So while it does show it out years of being in the red, I would not, a lot of things can happen, a lot of changes. These are based on a lot of projections at this time. It's hard to see that far in advance at this point in time. But we do believe we have a very conservative estimate shown on this document.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments? Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. I mean, it's, let's kind of kick off where you just ended, which is those last couple of years, because anybody who's ever kicked footbooks or sat in five minutes' worth of accounting class knows red's bad. Those numbers are way up there in 2021, 22, 23, and as Mr. Hawkins just said, they're created by the marvels of compounding, based upon escalations and inflations and all kinds of things. Mr. Hawkins just indicated the state's getting ready to redo bienniums. Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia says they'll pay for about half of the cost of public education. I think they pay between 30 and 40%. The federal government keeps passing all kinds of unfunded mandates and says, "Trust us, we'll pay you." And we know what those guys in Washington can't do. The reality is, the cost of education is falling on the locality across our nation. And that will be, those will be tough decisions this community will need to make, has made and will continue to make. And especially in Manassas, where, and Ms. Via, you might know the exact number, but I think we are now, we're back to being the fourth fastest-growing municipality in the Commonwealth of Virginia?
I'm not going to quote it, I'll have to look it up.
Just in the paper, like this week, it's, you know, so we continue to grow, and what that means is we continue to get students, and one of the biggest drivers of the cost of our delivering educational services is the number of students.
Thank you, sir. And again, we met about this back in October 12th, I think it was, and in my 11 years, I'm getting old, too. These out years are always red, and usually, they're not, they're red sooner than this. And like you said, our numbers are conservative, and a lot of things change, and it usually changes somewhat in our favor, so that there's not a whole lot of change that need to be done when those, and those red numbers start coming down.
We hope we've given you the worst-case scenario.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you.
Calendar changes. Now, Mr. Lyons.
Good evening, Chairman Demaria, Honorable Members of the Board, Honorable Superintendent and New Replacable, Dr. McGork. This evening, I am here to present a change to the 1718 school calendar, which is the school year. We received a request from the Director of Elections for the City of Manassas, asking for June 12th, the primary election day, that the schools be closed due to her polling needs for that election. I presented this to you in the last work session, that we do have enough instructional hours to cover this, converting the June 12th from instructional day to a teacher-work day. We still have instructional hours left over to cover any winter days that we anticipate having over this school year. So tonight, I present this change. You'll see June 12th would become a teacher-work day, which is green, the last day of school, will remain June 14th. We do not see changing that. And so tonight, I ask you to consider this change and approve.
Mr. Chair, I move the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the proposed change to the 2017-18 school calendar as presented.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams. Discussion?
Mr. Haley?
Is it not 2018-2019? Oh, standard this?
Yes. Good question, though.
But I may be back for that one.
Or click. Anyone else?
Do you have something? We did discuss this at our last work session. We are now working with our registrar much closer, so we will have a better idea of when this is going to happen, so we won't have to be making these changes necessarily. And the reason we don't know about it really is because you don't know until a primary is needed, and they're not always needed. And so that's why this change has to be made now, but hopefully, we'll be able to work with her better and have a better idea, and these changes will be less frequent, hopefully not at all, but, you know, we'll have to work on that. So, thank you, sir. I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams. That School Board of the City of Manassas approve the proposed change to the fiscal year, school year, 2017-18 school calendar as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 7-0. A 30 ain't bad.
Chair, I move the School Board of the City of Manassas adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Kiefer, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 7-0. We are adjourned.